Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a discussion.
Yes.
Okay, Mary Lee.
I would like to make a motion to remove the budget. And remove the budget from the agenda and have a special meeting just on the budget sometime this week.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I am not willing to second that.
Not willing to second that? Joe?
I'm not either. I would want to see how our discussion goes. If we can't reach a consensus view on the budget tonight, we can always have a special meeting later this week.
Okay.
I have all those thoughts. That's what I was thinking. We should at least take a stab at it tonight.
Right.
Okay.
That's okay? All right. Anything else? So I guess we don't have to deal with that yet. Anything else from this? If not, all those in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes, 12:28, 22.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for 12:28, 22 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Discussion? Corrections?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Lee.
I think you called the meeting to order at seven, not at six thirty-one.
Okay.
And then down below where the approval of minutes, where we made the changes. Let's see, one, two, three, the third one down. It says fourth line, four to six should be changed to forty-six. Also, at that point, there was a... There were six members on the board instead of five. I think they were two anti and three pro. But she had four and four and two. So it should be three and two, not four and two. And let's see, I think.
Could you clarify that, Mary Lee? I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Okay, that fifth paragraph, fourth line, forty-six should be changed, four to six should be changed to forty-six. That's correct. But there was also, if I don't have them with me. The vote was three yes and two no to approve the, from the DRB. But if she had four and two, she had six people and there's only five people on the board.
Excuse me?
Yes, Allison.
I went back and listened to that and what's in there is what Janet stated.
Janet stated it wrong.
I guess what she's saying is that we don't have six members on the board, therefore it could not be four and two. It was actually three and two, Allison.
But how can you change what Janet stated?
I don't think we should. If this is a quote of Janet, then it probably should be a parenthetical comment after it. Clarifying that there are not, there are not six members on the board, so presumably the vote was three and two.
Okay. You get that clarification, Allison?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, then on page three, the second full paragraph. Four lines up, it says, listen, one hour, five minutes in. I don't understand what she's saying. If we find a year in paving, he doesn't feel it should be pushed up another year. Listen, one hour, five minutes in. I don't know what the one hour, five minutes in is.
It's just my notation. I'll take it out.
I have nothing else.
Okay, Joe?
Yes, first, I attended that meeting, so I should be listed as present. And second, on the second page, last paragraph. Nine lines from the bottom. The chairman, Davis Missell.
I'm sorry, Joe. How many lines up?
I'm guessing here, I think it's nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The end of the line, end of the ninth line.
Yeah, got it.
That's it.
Anything else, Joe?
No.
Okay, Jeff, all set? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Citizens' comments and/or concerns, items not on the agenda. Take the first.
Hello?
Okay, we'll take you first, then you go ahead. Go ahead.
It's Rick Pontillo. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity. I've been talking to Mike over the past couple of weeks with respect to the sewer issues that we've had with... And I don't know whether it's called the Bombazine Town Sewer Pump or it's the Sucker Brook Pump. I've heard, I've heard both. I guess I'll refer to it as the Bombazine Sewer Pump. It's right over by Sucker Brook, though. We had two failures that I experienced, sewage backups into my home. The first one was in September, which was a major failure. And I think Mike had distributed a package that included some pictures and also some of the discussion points that I'll, I'll talk to you about tonight. We, the first one in September, we had significant damage, which required, you know, cleanup and demolition, reconstruction, which the total cost of that, and also I had to put in a... I had to have my lawn excavated on my property to get access to the sewer line that goes out into the town sewer system. And I had a backflow valve. So the total costs to me was almost $23,000, of which I appreciated what the Vermont League of Cities and Towns had covered. And they paid me $10,000 for, for this, this, this instance. My insurance paid me $5,000, so I got a total of $15,000. So it was out of pocket around seven grand, which is significant. What I wanted to talk to you all tonight is the importance of getting this system so that we can consistently depend on, depend on it. I also had a backup right around Christmas. It was the Friday before Christmas as a result of the power outage and no backup generator at that pump. We managed to abate that, so there wasn't any damage there. But, you know, it didn't make for a very good Christmas for us. We were pretty upset about it. We had a lot of stress in our family. My wife was emotionally distraught over this for several days. It was an unfortunate, but it, this is something that really needs the town's attention. And Mike and the Sewer Department need your support to make sure that these failures don't occur again. There's a couple of things that I think need to be focused in on. First, there's got to be a permanent resolution for the pump failure. The December, the December, the September issue that we had, apparently the remote signal that sends a, a, a message to, I think Jeff Jordan or Russ Hallett's pager, that didn't work. So I had to call 911 and call the fire department to finally get somebody to, you know, go over and see what was going on with the pump. I initially thought that it was my problem and it, you know, I just had a plugged line. But when I drove to go and find my plumber, I had noticed that the, the red light was flashing, the siren was going on, but there was nobody at that pump station. So I think that that has to be absolutely resolved as soon as possible. Second, go ahead.
Fine, if I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but Dave and Brett and Mike gave the board an update tonight. They have a temporary solution and they expect to come back to the board at the next meeting with a permanent solution.
Yeah, that's fine. I'd like to continue with the last couple of items that I want to discuss, though, Jim. I do appreciate you guys discussing this advance, but I'd like the opportunity to finish up with the board.
Certainly, go ahead.
I think that there's got to be a permanent backup generator installation there for when the power fails. That's got to happen. I'm not getting any warm feelings that I don't see one out there today. I have discussed it with Mike, but the urgency of when we have a power failure, that there has to be a backup generator there immediately plugged in. I also understand that there's an issue with the pump station holding tank. There's a great deal of water, especially during big rainstorms, that seems to be getting into that tank. I've been told that it usually takes about eight hours for normal usage for everybody that supplies waste to that system. It takes about eight hours for that to fill up. It's been told to me that that's filling up in about three areas. So I think that that's absolutely one of the things that's a must-have. Got to identify where that water's coming from and it has to be fixed. And the last point that I'd like to make, Jim, and to the select board. I am out of pocket, $7,000. I do appreciate the insurance that I got from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I would not have had to put in, had my lawn excavated and had to put a backflow valve in there if we could depend on that pump system. I'm glad that I've got it in, or my December failure could have been much worse. The December pump failure could have been much worse. So I'm asking the town to consider reimbursing me, and you have all of the receipts there for the labor and who did it for, you know, $1,000 in change. And that's all that I've got. Thanks for listening to me and I look forward to you guys getting back to me.
We'll get back to you, Rick, you can be sure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys, and Happy New Year to all of you. And I'd also like to give a special shout out to Jeff Jordan and Russ Hallett. I've been with those guys till wee hours in the morning as they've been hanging out trying to get that pump fixed. And I really appreciate their work and I appreciate the work of the fire department guys that had come over to the house during the, during the September incidents that helped coordinate things with the folks over at the sewage treatment department, as well as coming over to make sure that we had no, you know, sewer gas released into my home. So just a shout out to those guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens who wish to address the board? Items not on the agenda. Seeing none. We'll move on. Extremely important item here, town report cover. We have a photograph of the fireworks over Crystal Beach on July 4th, which is the only thing that Karen had received so far. Comments, suggestions from the board?
Are you saying this is going to be the cover?
That's what she's saying.
No, no longer.
That's the old.
That's the town plan, that's not the town report.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Mixed up, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, has been a cover of the town, or a picture of the town office on the cover of a previous town report.
Is this acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Yes. Yes? Yes. It's acceptable to the board, Mike?
Okay, well, one of the things that we don't have a picture of us going to bring up is we have pictures of the, of the parade, the delighted holiday parade and the fireworks, and we're going to try to split them to do both. But if you dislike that, then we'll go with that. Okay? I'm not opposed to either approach, Mike.
No.
Likewise.
We'll see.
Not opposed to either one.
Parade because it represents citizen engagement.
It also represents the coldest part of the year and the warmest part of the year. So, and we get both here, so.
Okay. Shall we leave that to Mike and Karen's discretion? I'm sure they have our thoughts.
This is the part where we get out of the way, Jim.
Happy to do that. Tim, the Broughton County Solid Waste District update. Tim Gilvin.
Thank you. I just wanted to, number one, alert you that the tipping fee is going up a dollar, which is a five percent increase. And I don't know, Mike, if that, that, or not. Costs have gone up considerably, of course, with everything else. The sell has cost almost seven and a half percent for us to get rid of the trash at this point. Our budget is up about 10%, a little under 10% due to wages, disposable costs, decrease in revenues. And we've got a few major expenses, one being the water runoff issues that the state is having us go through at the recycling center. We put about $100,000 into that for budgeted, and it looks like about $500,000 debt by the time we get all done. That's a replacement, or we will have to replace some pillars at the Gleason Road Transport Station Recycling Center, because the bees have, we can oppose to the extent that they need to be replaced. There's carpenter bees that are getting in there. We'll replace those and address that issue with metal or something, I guess. We did have a budget surplus from 2021 of somewhere over $200,000. I would like to see us budget reserve funds for equipment replacement over the years, or that's not what we did. So we've taken some of that money and used it to replace some of our equipment. We've replaced the excavator caterpillar that was quite old, box truck forklift that was so old we could no longer get any parts for it. And there's still some monies that the board is holding on to in a unreserved fund. See what the next year brings. We also, my encouragement, built a fund for grant program through the district. Some of the towns wanted to do something. This year we put $25,000 into it from unreserved funds from the budget year, which has not yet been audited, but it looked like a safe thing to do, be the 2022 year. And that their budget ends in January or December 31st. And that grant program would be for some schools, wanted to do some innovative things, maybe concerning a recycling project, or maybe, I'm hoping that we can improve something like Senior Citizens Center that might want to get recycling bins out to people. And town transport stations, if they needed some improvement, there would be some monies available to apply down the cost of things like maybe a roll-off container or some other improvement at transport station. And that will, the board has put that in place and the idea of it hasn't really been fully developed yet, but should be ready to go by June 30th for July 1st request. Budget next year is balanced. We have a capital improvement plan in place now. We're hoping that with these increases in salaries, we'll be able to retain and recruit staff. And we're going to take an incremental approach to inflation and rising costs. So that doesn't happen all at once because we, we didn't do anything. Our tipping fees continue to be among the lowest of all the trash districts in the state. So I think that our management's doing a good job. We keep the costs down. We have reduced staff by one-half person recently and not staffed due to some consolidation of jobs and a little bit more efficiency. And we've also been taking advantage of some grants for this equipment replacement and hopefully our budget, where we started to put in some capital improvement funds, will be able to enable us to take advantage of grants in future. And I did get a question from Ms. Balding, Mary, that he was wondering if we could get any kind of deal for the town on roll-off containers. I will check with our district. I'm not sure if they get any better deals than the town. We just replaced, or we are replacing one that brought it out. I think it was 13,500. I don't know what the town got for price. But that grant program might be something that we could get some money for that.
Mr. Chairman, I talked to Mark about that and we did our, we checked on that and you guys paid a lot. The price went down to 7,900 now.
7,900, or maybe invested.
Other questions for Tim? Joe?
Tim, did, did you say your revenues increased?
Our revenues through recycling have been going down and we anticipate next year that there may be less trash, which decreases our revenues and also decreases our expenses, but it's kind of a little balancing act there. We're not able to deficit spend, so we have the budget for, zero budget. And that's sometimes tricky, so that's why we do end up with some surplus from time to time. But you can never guarantee that going into the full year.
Other questions for Tim?
Oh, and the household hazardous waste, I gave Mike the updated pickups. We will have three pickups in Castleton next year and they'll be three hours apiece. So that's an increase that we're able to get. And the Gleason Road Transport Station is also open for household hazardous waste drop off. And to access that, you just need a permit from there. And if you have one permit from our transfer station, you're able to get one free from the Broughton County Solid Waste District by giving your vehicle information and your permit number from Castleton. And that from January to January, so people that had one last year would need to get one now, but they can still use here. Permit from Castleton, being expired at the end of June.
Okay, other questions for Tim? No? Thank you very much, Tim. We appreciate the update. Moving on, Recreation Committee petition submitted regarding CVS. We have a memorandum here from Nedra, the town clerk, certifying that the attached petition contains the signatures of 194 legal voters of the town of Castleton, which more than meets the minimum requirements. Would you care to have me read the petition? Joe was saying yes. Okay. Give Rec a home, keep CVS and Town ownership. Something was stamped out here, okay. "We, the undersigned registered voters of Castleton, support keeping the Castleton Village School, CVS, building and town ownership for use as a multi-purpose recreation center. We are petitioning to reverse the select board decision to sell the Castleton Village School. We petition the select board to keep the Castleton Village School building and property in town ownership for at least three years. Three years will allow Castleton's newly expanded recreation department to become established financially with programs developed for all ages and interests." Is there a motion? Place it on the ballot as a special item. Joe?
Well, I was going to ask if a similar petition has been filed in the town of Hubbardton.
No idea. Does anyone know if a similar petition has been filed in Hubbardton?
Filed in the town of Hubbardton?
Not yet.
The only question that occurs to me is if we make a motion to include this as a ballot item, which I'm not opposed to doing, I just want to make sure that we get the wording right on the ballot article. So how do we do that?
But I think we need to talk to our town attorney for one thing.
Yeah.
Because if we do this, I want to do it right.
Oh, sure.
And in most cases, the articles on the town ballot are monetary items, legislative items. So it makes sense to me personally to include that in the language of the article.
Am I wrong? I maybe that.
It's the first time tonight.
The first time tonight, yes. Can you put something on to cover three years or do you have to do this year, next year, following year?
We're going to have to follow the wording of the petition.
Mr. Chairman, Nedra's on. If there's a technical question about the ballot article, how, how, how it works, Nedra's on there.
Nedra, did you get that question that Mary Lee asked?
Yes, you do have to go with word for word what the petition reads.
Other question?
How do we then handle the Hubbardton portion of it? Is it subsequent to the same decision being made by Hubbardton? I don't know the answer to that one.
We're still in a joint ownership.
Yes, joint ownership, yes.
I don't have an answer to that.
I haven't answered that. Yeah, Martha?
Martha Clifford, Recreation. Has there been any more discussion on the buyout proposal from Castleton to Hubbardton? Is the last one?
No. No, there's not. Silence is golden.
Is this something that we should talk to an attorney about?
Is that your thought, Joe, that we should talk to an attorney about it as naturally, as quickly as possible?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I mean, presumably some of the introductory language of the petition would not be included in a ballot article.
Yeah.
But the third and fourth sentences, the third sentence in particular seems to be the, the part of the matter. To paraphrase that third sentence in the language of an article might be something like, shall the town of Castleton keep Castleton Village School building and property in town ownership for at least three years? But I think, you know, that, that's what makes sense to me, but I think we need a lawyer to advise us as to whether that's the correct way to respond to the petition.
I would agree with Joe.
I agree with that, too.
I'm not sure that the dollar, the, the cost should be included in this article. I think it should be a separate article, but I could be wrong about that.
I think I would agree with that as well, but again, I think it's a matter for an attorney to...
Because if we throw, if we throw a dollar value into this article, I think we're muddying the waters, so to speak.
Yeah, it was clearly not the intention of the petition.
Correct. Okay, anything else, Mike? Now I'll get right to you, Mary. Okay, anything else, Mike? Now I'll get right to you, Mary. Mike, you have.
I just had a question, Mr. Chairman, to the ad hoc committee is, so does the Articles of Agreement that say that Castleton and Hubbard shall mutually agree on the use of the building apply in this case? So they have to be part of this, this motion to keep the building for three years?
I would think so because they have to pay for eleven percent of it.
I just remember something in the Articles of Agreement said that both towns shall mutually agree on the use of the building or something paraphrasing that.
There's a separate, a separate language in the Articles of Agreement, which I couldn't recall off the top of my head, which says that decisions to sell or lease the building have to be made jointly by the combined select board of the two towns. And since the last decision that that body, that joint select board body made was to sell the building, this, this, this requires, if this, if this passes, this requires that Castleton's select board to approach the Hubbard's select board in a joint meeting and advocate that we keep the building for at least three years and thereby reverse the previous decision to sell it.
If they said if they were the opposite of what you, what the town of Castleton is asking, then that would, would that nullify the the motion or that ballot article?
It's the joint select boards that would make that decision. So if we were to, Castleton Select Board would move that we rescind previous decisions to sell that presumably would be seconded, discussed, debated, and voted on. And they have five votes and we have five votes. But if I knew, if I knew this question was going to come up, I would throw up the articles of agreement.
Anything else on board?
Not yet.
Just a further comment.
Okay, hold it. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mike, because I think given the Articles of Agreement, I don't think that we can unilaterally honor an article that has this content in it that will be passed by the voters. And that's a, that's a sticky issue in my mind.
That's where my, my head was going is.
So I, I think it's as important that Hubbard get this on their ballot as.
Mary?
That was just one of the things I wanted to reiterate that is our intention to submit this petition to Hubbard as well. So that is the plan. Also, I, I, the whole, your question about whether an article, I can think of two citizen-driven petitions in the last several years that haven't mentioned money. One is the legal retail cannabis. And the other is the climate, the climate change article we had several years ago, neither of those mentioned money. And they were citizens of a ballot particles that were put on the town meeting day ballot and voted on. Which is my sense there.
Okay, thank you. So folks, where are we on this? Are we restoring it as quickly as possible to the town attorney or an opinion?
Yeah, and it's pretty urgent given deadline for.
I have a question for our town clerk perhaps. Is our town clerk still on?
Yes.
Nedra, question, how soon do you need actual honest to God verbiage to put in the town in the warning?
Well, the verbiage is already there. That's what's, what the petition is worded. We have to use how the petition is worded.
Okay.
That's my understanding. When a petition is submitted, that is what gets put on the ballot.
So that would be the final, the last three sentences of the four sentences on this petition? I would assume. Well, that's a dangerous word, I know.
I don't have a copy of it here with me, but yes, whatever the question is, I know there's a couple of questions there.
Karen?
Yes, Joe?
Just to follow up on that, Nedra, the, the key point of this petition language is that it petitioned the select board to reverse its decision to sell the building. And it petitions the select board to keep the building and property for at least three years. It's, it's all addressed to the select board decision. And obviously there, I can find a question for the voters that, that asks what they want the town to do, but that's not what this petition said.
Correct. It is asking the select board to rescind and to keep it for three years. My understanding is that would be a yes or no question and the voters would vote either yes or no.
Does that help?
Just makes me want more legal opinions. I mean, we want to do the right thing here.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's I have a sense of what it might what question might be put before the voters on town meeting day. But it's not the precise language of this petition as it's written. And if we don't have any flexibility to do anything but replicate the language of the petition in the article, then I guess that's what we will have to do.
So if we provide you with something, Nedra, by the twenty, by the evening of the twenty third, so on your desk the morning of the twenty fourth of January, is that soon enough?
Uh, yes, provided you're not approving the warning that night because it would have to be on the warning.
Fair enough. How soon do we have to approve the warning by the twenty fourth?
I pretty much, I think the first day for it to be posted is the twenty, hang on, I wrote it down, I think it's the twenty sixth. Is the first day for the warning to be posted.
Okay, so this really can't wait till the next board meeting. It's the bottom line.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I talked about this with Karen today and we also have, this has to go to the printers. Because the town report has to go to the printers and the, and the ballot articles are in the town report. So we're backed up against that timeline, which if you is the twenty, what's the last select board meeting is the twenty six?
The last select board meeting is the twenty third.
Twenty third. So she's, today it was three days later, we'd have to have, after that meeting, we'd have to have the the draft copy or not the draft copy, the final copy to the printers, so it even backs it up tighter than the twenty third. If it's, it waits until the twenty third and if the budget is on the twenty third, if there's anything bleeds over, we're talking three days for the town crew to police us all up and get it to the printers. Follow what I'm saying, I guess. What I'm saying is that, that's a, to get everything done and voted on on the twenty third and then only have the twenty fourth and twenty fifth to check it over, make sure that there's no spelling errors and everything reads exactly the way it's supposed to, that gives us two days.
So are you suggesting that we may need a special meeting?
It's looking that way.
Yes.
Something we could do via Zoom though.
And it gives me time to get your legal, get a legal opinion on your questions. Not a lot of time, but at least at some time.
We just need to make sure that whatever we put on the town warning is worded correctly, to ask the question appropriately. I totally get what you're asking us to, to do, Martha. I just want to make sure that whatever we do is clear to the voters and clear to us after the voters say yes or no.
Okay. So we. Probably as clear as mud.
So is this something, Jim, that you and Mike are going to take care of? Get us in and figure out what the verbiage is supposed to be?
Probably a full eight hundred tomorrow morning.
Works for me. So at eight oh one, I'll expect your phone call.
How about eight oh two?
Fair enough. No, it's, you know, it's.
Joe, I hope you're going to be involved in this.
If you want me to.
I do.
If it seems like this, probably going to need some education.
Definitely.
Because given the Articles of Agreement related to the village school, related to the town of Hubbard. I mean, if I were writing this, I'm not, I can't, there would be a word such as pending in here. Pending a decision, you know. So I think we have to explain to people that whatever comes of this on town meeting day will require further process that will, that will have to involve the joint select board of towns of Castleton and Hubbard. And presumably this will bind the Castleton Select Board's position and stance in those discussions. But we cannot steamroll our friends from Hubbard.
Okay.
Shall we then move on?
Do we need a motion to refer this to town attorney?
I don't think so.
The SAP, you don't need it?
Just get it done.
Think we need it, Joe? And Mary Lee, we're all happy, okay. We'll move on. Planning Commission endorsement of Michael Jones' appointment as interim zoning administrator.
So do we need to actually make a motion on this or just acknowledge that the, that we received the recommendation?
Make a motion.
I mean, it's redundant.
Use a hand in the audience?
I, I, I thought we were going to have some discussion about the, the rec commission petition, but my daughter had written a letter to the select board about the CVS school and I was wondering if I could give that to you before we head home.
Okay.
Is that kosher or am I allowed to do that?
Sure.
Long, yeah, sure.
Give it to the chair.
Particularly pleased to hear from another citizen.
Yeah. He was particularly pleased to attend, if you may.
This is from this young lady here?
Anyway, here, yeah.
You wrote that, huh? Good for you.
Want to read that for the record?
Will we read this into the record? Your desk, I'll let you read this in.
I can read the writing, cool. Good penmanship. Hi, my name is Amber. I play basketball for the Castleton Rec and we practice at the middle school since the elementary school is occupied most nights. Since the fifth and sixth practice there, we can't use it. Sorry if I'm I manage, I I imagine you play basketball and you don't have, imagine if you play basketball and you don't have a place to practice. Basketball is normally an indoor sport since it's normally in the winter time. I imagine you have, or imagine you have to practice out in the cold or not practice at all. If you didn't practice at all, you wouldn't just show up at games and not know how to play. That is unless you have played before. I haven't played a lot of basketball, so I didn't know the basic drills or plays. But I, it feels like this town wants kids to be able to have a place to do things like play basketball. I would also like to say that if, that I feel like I belong there. For a lot of kids, being on a team is really nice because your team is always there for you. What I'm saying is that we should turn the middle school into a rec center. Sincerely, Amber Bentley, Five Seminary Street, Castleton, Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for the poor job of reading it.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to we have the planning commission endorsement of Mike Jones interim zoning administrator. Handle that.
Well, do we need to actually do anything except acknowledge that we have this recommendation now? What do you think?
Because we've already voted in anyway.
Yeah, the appointment exists.
So we're good.
Yeah, I think it would be the right thing to apply to Lizzie saying that, you know, we have already made that appointment.
We appreciate the recommendation. Thank her very much and that we
agree.
Agree with them and reaffirm the appointment. How's that?
That's good. Do a second to that, that emotion might, uh, Dick or what is it?
Probably should be.
All right, send us a second to it.
I would second.
In a second, good question. Being done, I'll go to favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, board.
So what else can we do to help you get a real, a permanent replacement for Jonas?
Okay. Beverage King second class license, license for approval, tobacco license for approval. This is from the Beverage King. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the application for a second class liquor license from Joe Seska. There's beverage king, beverage king.
I'll second that.
In a second, discussion. Then reviewed by the police chief, Mike.
I'll let Nedra, I wasn't there involved in that one, so I'll let Nedra answer if she could.
You there, Nedra?
I am. I have not heard back from chief on this one yet. I did talk to DLC because these are all new applications. There's nothing on paper. Everything is done over the computer now, so there will be nothing for you guys to sign. I don't believe there's anything outstanding, but I did not hear back from chief yet.
What is waiting down here? What's that mean?
System would not give me any information on this. Not even jumping store of the day.
What does it mean?
It means the system wouldn't give me any information on what that was. So I couldn't get an answer for you.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Nedra.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
We do.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
So we have a second application.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, you do. This year it is new, Jim. You do have tobacco that you have to approve also.
I would move that we approve the application for tobacco license at Beverage King.
I'll second that.
In a second, discussion. Being done, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Now we move on to Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the regular commissioner appointment of Liz McKay, the alternate Frank Johnson.
Make a motion, we appoint Liz McKay as the let me show you this right, as the regular commissioner to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and Frank Johnson is appointed as the alternate commission for a period of one year expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So we're six months behind on doing this.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna take that.
Any discussion?
If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
We don't have one here.
I think it's one document, Jim, you just sign it, that's got the things on it.
Oh, yes, there is. I got it. Yeah, okay. Highway mileage certificate. We have that in our packet.
To make a motion, we approve the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February tenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Is it the same, Mike?
It is no change from last year.
No change, okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I think we all have to sign this one.
Yep.
Set down, Jim?
Yep. Mary Lee?
Nedra, we'll have to give that one to you tomorrow for your second trial, file it.
Hold there. Thank you, Joe. Next item is hail resources extension request. This is something we brought up at the last meeting, but we did not have. An opportunity to review it. I believe town attorney Ted Parisi has reviewed it and made suggestions for changes, a few changes. Which are agreeable to hail resources.
Zach's on Zoom, so you know.
Is there a motion?
Would we approve the addendum number two? To the purchase and sale agreements. With hail and hail. Related to these property on sand.
I will second that motion.
And a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask what the changes were that the?
I'm sorry, Mary Lee. You reviewed yourself on this item.
Not for everything.
Anything dealing with this project?
Hey, fun.
Any others? Go.
I I just had a question about. A term in the middle of. First page of the document under. One A. The sentence reads that the time. This addendum number two is executed, the purchases have entered into a term sheet. With potential development partners. Zach, can you explain what a term sheet is?
It it's just. It's an informal agreement that lists out all the terms of a partnership agreement that we have agreed to um move forward with. Should we get to the point of creating this entity?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bob, are you there?
No, Bob.
I have a question about what Joe said is term. What is the second word?
Sheet as in S H E E T.
Okay, thank you.
Very well. Okay, if there are any other questions, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mary Lee reviewed herself and. Bob is not with it.
Mike, can I ask a question? Who's the unidentified phone number?
I don't know. Um, though somebody on that has a three, five, two phone number. Could you please identify yourself for our minutes?
Who's the other number?
Tom is on the phone.
Jim Thomas.
Thank you.
And the second one is eight oh two, three, four, two, twenty, or no. Yeah, three, four, two, sixty, one, seventy. Who's that?
Whoever that is is muted.
Hello.
Is that Bob?
Yeah.
Hey, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
You hadn't been voting, so I didn't recognize your number. I didn't know you were there, Bob. Welcome.
No, I didn't. I didn't unmute myself. Sorry about that, guys.
It's okay.
So is the.
I voted on that last motion, no.
Is the three, five, two Jim Thomas because he's in another screen as well?
He is. Oh, you're right.
Correct. My computer doesn't have a mic, so I'm on the computer and the phone.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Bob said he voted on the last motion. Is that true, Bob?
Bob, did you vote on that last motion on hail resources?
I did.
And your vote was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Select Board budget discussion. Is that for approval with a question mark?
No. Uh, you probably just shouldn't say discussion.
All right. Okay, where do we start?
You want me to explain what you have, so that's.
You'll go ahead, Mike.
So the in the. Spreadsheet I gave you tonight, um, if you're looking in my direction, up top, it should say last updated one ten, two thousand twenty three, and. They wrote number three on most of them. I'm not sure if I missed one, but up top should say number three. So this is the change to the la- the last proposal, which is the bottom line figure. Falls in line with what the select board asked for. Last meeting under. Five percent or five percent or less, I guess. This this meets that criteria. If somebody's listening for the record, I guess what I presented to the board was a budget of three million, seven hundred and one thousand, six hundred and fifty seven dollars, which is. A one hundred and sixty eight thousand and fifty nine dollar increase. Over the previous year, which equates to a four point eight percent increase. So that's what you that's what you should be looking at if if I gave everybody the correct copy.
So would you? Joe, would you be willing, Mike, to tell us how you got from? Version number two to version number three?
Sure. Do you want to then go right by the lines that I that there's the departments or you wanted to get overview?
Well, why don't you start with an overview?
Okay. So the the last version I I gave you, there was two of them. Actually, there was one that was the raw numbers of what um working with the departments. What um we projected our costs would be, operating cost would be for fiscal year. Twenty four. So. Then subsequent to that, I also gave you one that said with ARPA considerations. And that spreadsheet had some recommendations on how to reduce some costs through the use of. ARPA fund. That. Admittedly, the. The number was three hundred and like fifty nine thousand, remind me right now. So it's a large number. And. Going back today, I worked with with Melanie today um on the highway carryover. You have you have a copy of that in your. Packet. It's all part of that one budget packet. Working with Melanie, the highway carryover uh numbers were finalized. And I what I recommended was. Uh, using some carryover out of the highway department, which that's where the most of the uh increases were. Uh, to get that. Budget number to a more manageable figure. Uh, and in particularly, in particular, um. The paving, instead of putting two hundred and nine thousand dollars of paving in there, is a four thousand. And there was a and there's a you have an ARPA sheet in there too. So consideration of using a hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars to help offset the cost of paving. Um. So you guys are. Can you have yours? That one right there. This one, we should be one or two.
Well, I have the old version, the one you gave us the other day.
So the the number I gave you originally was three hundred and fifty nine thousand, I believe it's worth, but um this one's down to a hundred and forty thousand, two hundred. By taking out everything except for twelve hundred dollars for municipal planning and zoning. The money that we pay to region Rutland. Uh, regional planning commission. The emergency services, twenty five hundred dollars in their reserve account and to help uh. The for a purchase of a. Components for UTV for packet patient packaging and transport. Hundred four thousand, five hundred was for paving. Twenty six thousand was for the highway garage. Uh, for replacing four overhead doors. Eight, there's eight doors up there, but what I was asking is if there's twenty six thousand dollars of ARPA used. Then I could budget in the four remaining doors over the next couple of years and reduce. The amount of ARPA to be used, but also keep the operating budget. Down as well. And then there was. Uh, six thousand dollars in there at the transfer station. For the putting up a permanent wall, a poured concrete block wall to start that process. It it's a lot more than that. This was just a start. So we could get the most critical portion completed where the rodents were undermined, find it. And that that would that would be it. And so that's a huge reduction from the previous one I gave you, but noting that. Hundred and four thousand dolla- hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars of that ARPA recommendation was for paving. Subsequent to that or or in addition to that. Um, we were able or I was able to look at the. Highway carryover with Melanie scrub those numbers today. And I can tell you where some of those. Reductions were. And I'm looking at the big spreadsheet right now, if you have you have that one.
Not number three.
It it's it should be the same one, Joe. I it's I maybe I just write number three on it, but the one I showed you that last page. Or or on page number. The roll up one.
The one that says last updated January tenth, twenty twenty three.
January tenth, and this is with ARPA considerations.
Up here, so. The one that he gave us tonight.
The one I was looking at. It was the the large one I I put on your desk tonight.
I have. Two large ones. One is number three and the other is the. List A and list B of ARPA.
You want the number three, Joe.
Okay.
In a particular, um. If you you notice the late version, because on page twenty one of twenty two, that's the hundred and sixty eight thousand, fifty nine dollars and or four point eight percent increase. But I right now I'm looking at page twelve of twenty two. That is highway department. Um, and you'll see a highlighted, large highlighted block on that page. That's five thousand, one hundred and seventy five dollars. And over in the right hand side under the notes, it says use three hundred and or thirty six thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars in highway carryover to pay for crushing. Including twenty, include twenty five thousand per year in crushing moving forward, which means we'll do it every two years rather than every three. So talking with Brent today and based on our last. Crushing two years ago, we believe that. We could crush every two years for fifty thousand dollars. We put it in the budget. Which is a reduction because if you look backwards in the blue column, it was thirty three thousand, nine hundred. So we we can reduce it. And but this year, the reduction would come from using thirty six thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars in highway carryover, which we. Shown that exists. Because there's that is that is it. That's what's in there in the carryover. That's not taking anything from unassigned, just. It's been moved from year to year just for crushing. So it's apples to apples. That that would be the first. Uh, reduction. And if you flip the page to page thirteen of twenty two. At the very top in yellow. Under capital prod or or OPS reclaim repave, there's the paving budget. There's a hundred and four thousand, five hundred in there. And I'm recommending or asking the board to consider using one that a hundred and four thousand, five hundred ARPA funds to get us to the full two hundred and nine thousand that we budget for. And then what is that? What's the what's the risk? The risk is if we continue to put two hundred and nine thousand in the paving budget. In the next fiscal year, we're going to have to add another hundred and four thousand, five hundred to get to that two hundred and nine. So your highway budget. In our in a subsequent fiscal year will would go up a hundred and four thousand dollars right at the back. Not not counting any other increases that might come along like wages, benefits and any other costs that.
Do we still have paving carryover as well?
Yeah, if you back so. On this sheet that was should have been in your packet. It says at the top. Updated one nine. Uh, pending audit. We have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars still because we didn't pave last year. So in the. Also going back to the page thirteen. Yellow block at the top, hundred and four thousand, five hundred, back up to the left to the previous fiscal year's budget, and that's where the hundred and seventy came from. It's in the blue. Budget. Line. So we didn't pave last year, so we didn't use any of the funds, so that is carried over. Uh, in our highway carryover. We normally. Budget two hundred and nine thousand. But when the budget was done last year, I said we can use third, I asked if we could use thirty nine thousand dollars out of the highway carryover at that time, and the board approved it. So that's where we got to the two hundred and nine. But we didn't use any of it. How we can be paved. So now we're fast forwarding to this year. To put two hundred and nine thousand dollars in there would spike the budget. Uh, or or made it higher. So I cut it in half. And asked the board to consider using the hundred and four thousand, five hundred ARPA funds. And that we wouldn't lose. We would have the money from. Last year and the money from this year. So that we don't lose a year in in our paving schedule. Does that make sense? No, so I'm gonna I'm gonna stop. I know, no, I seriously want to stop and explain it if it's. Because. We did because because we didn't pave last year, there's a mile and a half or a mile, three quarters road that we didn't pave. So the hundred and seventy that we had there. Is available, so that when we do our bids. This year, we got the hundred and seventy from. The carryover plus the hundred and minimum hundred and four right now. If you put the hundred other hundred and four in ARPA. Would increase it by the other hundred and four. So we'd have a hundred, two hundred and nine plus. Uh, a hundred and seventy, and we would catch up. We wouldn't lose a year. We will lose a year of paving.
What you're saying, what you're saying is there's only a mile something that you didn't pave.
Well, for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we're gonna depending on the the price that comes in this year. We're talking probably paving, maybe a mile and a half, maybe. That's a that's probably a big, that's probably going high. It's probably a little lower than that.
And the plan is to do two year, two miles a year.
Correct. So we're a little bit behind right now uh with a hundred and seventy, but it's better than being a whole full year, you know, two hundred and nine thousand dollars. Any questions on that? Okay, the next one on the same page. Uh, little yellow block under winter sands. Um, it's thirty six thousand. Um, the budget's normally sixty four thousand. And I. So I've actually, I'm I'm ten thousand dollars off there. It'd be twenty eight thousand. In ARPA. Or we could reduce the thirty six to twenty six together, just so it equals sixty four thousand. But talking with Brent today, um. Of the concept that we used. A lot, a couple of years of. That paper or milling machine that build down our roads and we use that, we took those millings ourselves. That's what Brent had. Uh, screened out and we made our winter sand out of that. He had to purchase uh some stone. And we had to rent a screen. But when you took the the eight thousand dollars for the screen and the thirty thousand or so for the stones, yeah, um, when you. All total, we saved the town over like twenty something thousand dollars by going that way. We plan on continuing to do that. So what does that mean? Means that when it comes time to order the sand, you may not have to use ARPA funds because that that thirty six thousand may cover it.
You're calling it ARPA, aren't you? Don't you mean carryover?
Dark carryover, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. I meant carryover. So that 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 money in carryover might not be able to be, might be able to be saved. But we're. We're gonna actually, instead of milling roads, um, we're getting, there's some gravel in the pit that's. On the western side, I guess it's finer and we may be able to just to screen that out and not have to worry about collecting it off the roads. So I think we have an evil plan. That will save the town. Money and fit within that thirty six thousand dollar budget. We're hoping.
But the carryover money. Should be twenty eight, not thirty eight.
Correct. Because we got is the between the math of the yellow thirty six, the blockage thirty six thousand and the highway carrier has to equal sixty four. So if you want to reduce the operating budget even more, we could put the, we could drop that thirty six. To twenty six and use the highway carryover to be thirty eight. Because I'm thinking. Because I'm thinking that we don't need, we don't need all of the carryover, but I think we'll need at least thirty six. So maybe it's, but talking out loud, it's better to keep the thirty six in there. So that's where some of the reduction came, um, instead of being sixty four thousand in there, it's. Thirty six. Again, there's some risk, if, depending on how everything goes and the price of. Uh, sand and stone, making it ourselves, um, that, but that thirty six could go up next year. But, but right now, that's how I see it. Any questions on that one? Uh, on page fourteen. Yellow block, there's repairs and maintenance, and we're under highway garage. And I took that number out of the, the original number out of that budget block and asked that. Twenty six thousand dollars in ARPA funds be used to replace four of the rotting doors and the motors. Um, and then I would put in money each year to, to, looks like maybe do two. Per year over the next couple fiscal years, spread that out and. Um, knowing that if something happens in the meantime, like one of those doors totally fails or a motor fails, we're gonna have to do something about it. No questions on that one? Then we're going to page fifteen. And it's under capital improvements, equipment reserve. So in the yellow column is ninety thousand. Last year there was eighty. And the highway department, um, at, we sat down and discussed what. What we need to stay on track with replacing the vehicles and meet the, the payments and. As of Friday, I believe it was, when Brett told me that the, they, they got a cost under the state bid of a new plow truck went to two hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. When I got up off the floor and went back and looked at this, um. I said, well, if we can go to ninety this year. And then the next fiscal year at another ten, we'll be at the hundred thousand that would meet our payment requirements for those new vehicles. Um, so that's no, no extra money, no, no ARPA, no carryover, just. Put ninety in there and, um, put another ten in the next fiscal year and gets us to the hundred. Any questions on that one? Okay, then I'm moving on and. I'm on transfer station, which it bleeds over from page sixteen onto seventeen, and I'm on page seventeen. Yellow block, eleven thousand dollars. After some consideration today. Um, and looking at the budget of where we're at, I believe that. I can, I can squeeze seventy nine hundred dollars out of the budget this year, because some of the improvements we didn't have to make. And I can purchase one of the bins this fiscal year before June thirtieth and put. And build it into this budget, so that eleven thousand dollars reflects the three thousand that was in the last year, plus the eight thousand I rounded. To the seventy nine, that, and we can do it without asking for any use of ARPA or anything else. So that would, any, any questions on that part? And then at the bottom, the yellow block at the bottom for improvements other than buildings. Um, that was where the concrete block wall comes in. Um, so I took a, that out of the budget and put it over in the right hand column for ARPA to consider. Using ARPA to kinda shore up our infrastructure there. That's problematic for us. And I think there's two guys at least in this room that had to deal with that block wall and keep resetting it and, um, because it. Pushes out and rodents are behind it. If we had a poured block wall and we got to where the pavement meets it, the rodents can't get in there. But those block walls, they can fit through that crack this big and, um, and they can get a lot of dirt, they move out of there, so. Uh, this would kind of, that's a, that's a start. We're, we're, we're talking a large. Project here. It's not, the whole project would be, you know, way more than six thousand dollars. Uh, so if the board so choose to use ARPA to pay for all of it and be done with it, because that will last for hopefully many years to come. Um, so it'd be a kind of a one off thing. It's buy it now and kind of, as we keep. Everything tight, so the rodents can't get in there, we shouldn't have a problem.
Two questions, if I may, Jim.
Sure.
Um, question one is how, uh, what would your best guess of what the, to do the whole project would cost?
That my number was from two years ago, Dick, and, and I, I wouldn't even venture to.
What was the two year old number?
Fifty five thousand dollars.
I was thinking sixty to eighty.
That, that's probably more accurate today, would be probably more towards.
So six thousand dollars wouldn't get very far.
What's that?
One and a half in that number.
One and a half.
I would, would be my.
So my eighty K figure might be optimistic. By a little bit. So six K ain't gonna get you very far, bottom line.
You know, fixes that corner by the compactor where we've had the most problems, um, and try to stop that from spreading.
Well, I do agree, keeping the roads out of that corner would be advantageous.
Well, the food source is there, so that's where they are.
Yeah.
So.
Um, for those of us who don't know, that we're talking about rats. Real honest to God rats.
So pending, you know, your questions, that's, I'm proposing that, but also stating that to do the whole project, it certainly would be. Con- considerably more. And we've talked about getting a quote and the folks that are, that we've asked so far, we haven't gotten anything back yet. So at least we can come to you with, because it doesn't have to be, that decision does, obviously doesn't be made now, because it's not in the, it's not in the budget. It's something to consider that you could use our vote later. Okay, no, if there's no questions, then I'm on page eighteen. And other, other purchase services. Um, mowing was moved out of here, so all mowing got moved to town lands. Um, so we're talking a small amount of money in there now for brush clearing, uh, that's sticking out from, by the railroad. Um, we, if we're the fifty feet of the railroad tracks, we gotta. Talk to the railroad about that, because it's in there right away. But the stuff that's where we mow, and then there's some hanging over where we mow, just to get that stuff cleaned back and trimmed up. Um, and then, um. The face ship boards on the building, um, they've been there and looked at it, they're rotting and paint, no paint on it anymore. Not much, once we grab a hold of them, there's not much to paint anymore. Um, so that's something that we can handle. Uh, we don't, I don't think we have to hire a, a contractor to come in and do that. And then dropping down two lines under the yellow block four hundred. Um, this is the bigger one. The roof down there, I, I encourage anybody to take a ride down there and take a look at what that place looks like. Um, is to repair the roof on the bath, on the bath house. Shingles blew it off and they're all old crumbling. They're probably original. I think that thing was built and. I was a kid playing baseball down there, so I know it's been around for a long time. Um, so that, so I'm asking it to consider three thousand dollars in ARPA, um, to repair that roof.
Joe, uh, thank you. Mike, I'm looking at your potential uses of ARPA funds for fiscal years.
Yeah.
The unique field has a zero in it.
Okay, I missed that, I'm sorry.
So that should be three thousand.
Correct. Sorry about that.
Change of that to two thousand, Mike.
Uh, three thousand of, of potential or consideration for use of ARPA funds. There any questions on those two?
Just not, but it must not be a very big group.
It's not in. I, I mean, I use three thousand dollar quote to give you at this point, but I'm trying to, because I know you don't, you don't have to authorize it right now. It's not in the budget, so if you use, if you wanna use our bike, come back to you with a very, get three quotes and, you know, meet those, there are purchasing, um. Bid requirements or policy, but I guessed about three grand.
I have no idea what it costs to do shingles now.
No, I don't either.
Ten years ago was a hundred dollars a square. I don't know what it is now. Probably, probably three, isn't it?
Okay, Mike, move on.
Uh, I'm on page nineteen now, and it's under Hyville Field. The mowing, there's a note, um, it moved to town lands. Um, I zeroed out the, the twelve hundred because of. That, it was, it was actually more than we were budgeting. When I went through the budget today with Melanie, um, some of those things were, we were a little bit off. So that's out of there. And I removed the stuff that was originally in the ARPA about the, the, um, replacing or fixing the. Dugouts and all that, because I looked at the budget for this year. And just see where we're at, and I think we have enough in this budget year to do what we need to do. And Bo and I talked about that and, um, putting together a. Kind of a marketing strategy to help solicit, um, help from the community to help do some of this work. And I also spoke with Dave and Brent, um, but I was down there with Brent the other day, and we believe that there's some stuff that the town crew can do to help. With re- reseeding and, you know, the, the field, totally, the field looks like hell. Um, it, it, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. So, um, the wind blew over a dugout. Broke the fence and all the posts snapped off and it's, it loo- it looks like, um, a, like some inner city ghetto thing that was abandoned. Um, so it, it's something that I think. Reflects poorly on our community, and I know that we're, we're better than that. And that's not how we want things to, to be projected and, and the message we send. So I think we got enough in the budget to do that, and we'll be resourceful for that way.
Did we ever fix the ruts and whatnot from the vandalism?
I went down there, looked at it, and actually Bo and I walked that, and, um, it's all been grown and filled in, so it's, there's no, doesn't look like there's any real. Liability for the town, like somebody's gonna step in a big rut and twist their ankle and have a kid, a young person injured. So I think we're good there. Um, but there's a lot of landscaping, cleaning up to do, but a lot of that could be done. Through some community involvement. And we got some highway crew work that we're gonna need helping with the, uh, New Holland to cut back some brush. A tree fell on the swing set, the playground down there. It has to be removed and. So it's just a big, and the bottoms of the dugouts are rotted, so they're, they're leaning forward, because they were put on dirt, so they're, they need to be. The bottoms fixed, brought up onto some stone and concrete, so that they don't rot. They don't, we need some, there's some fixing to do and painting and stuff like that, but not monumental. But getting in better shape. Uh, any questions on Hyville Field? And there's one, it's, it's not marked in yellow, but maybe a, a, a question that people ask, and that's the town lands. Um, line, I'm just gonna find it, go ahead.
I'll look back a few pages.
Yeah, so on page fifteen. Under town lands, that large budget increase, nineteen thousand dollar budget increase, that's the, the mowing. So everything that the select board approved got put under that line, that was a town lands. To incl- there's only one thing I'm not clear on, and I didn't have a chance to resolve it today, was. In the library budget, they had some, they have money in there for mowing, they do their, pay their own stuff. And if we, if we're gonna put it all under town lands, I need to talk to the library, uh. Board and find out. I gotta reduce it by like two grand. Um, so that's something I, I haven't been able to clarify yet for you. But that's where the, if, if someone comes in the, in the votes on that ballot article and sees us a nineteen thousand. Six hundred and seventeen dollar increase, they could just say no, because they don't know the backstory behind it. So there's some market, or some themes and messages, I guess, we gotta. I gotta do on that. That's pending, if your question, that's, that's an overview of where the changes came in. And in your, oh, I'm sorry, in your packet too, you should, there's a copy of the budget through November. There's an ARPA, Melanie put this together today. The ARPA one shows what we have in ARPA, ARPA. The interest earned onto it, on, on that money so far, and what was spent so far out of it. And the unexpended balances. And the big sheet I gave you, this is just a copy of what you've already received before in the past. This was the. Potential uses of ARPA and some dollar figures thrown at it. Um, I di- I didn't throw, I didn't give it to you for the dollar figures part, just kind of. When you look at that, when you're, when you're considering the ARPA and you see how much is remaining, and you look at these projects, it kind of gives, might give you an idea of. Is there enough money still sitting there to do what you wanted to do with ARPA or what you're considering? And in your packet, there's also a copy of the reserve account balances. And. If you don't, do, do you have the highway carryover one? Okay, so it, I just wanna bring it to, to, I know Mary Lee looked at this the other day with me. And there's a yellow block at the bottom, it says highway surplus carryover unassigned pending audit. It was a hundred eighty thousand dollars. We'll talk with Melanie today and our auditors, uh, what was, what came out of the auditors. Uh, discussions was there was some FEMA money that the town received. And that, there may have be some reclassification on that, which may have, so under, if you follow to the right, under the less expended. There's eighty seven thousand four hundred dollars. That, that signifies money that. That might have to get reclassified and not eligible or not available. So. Number that estimated, uh, balance available on the far right side of that. Column is ninety three thousand, uh, two hundred and fifty four dollars and fifty seven cents of projected. Unassigned highway carryover. Um, as of the end of November.
Not yet, Mary. You'll have your chance.
Can I just request that this be put in a minute, so we can look at it?
That's where it'll be.
And I'll be posting this out there.
Okay, anything else for Mike? I have a couple of questions. You're saying that the budget increase would be four point eight percent?
Correct.
Now, does that mean four point eight percent plus this?
Yes.
So it's not four point eight percent?
No, but that's not in the budget. That'd be consideration in the budget, the, of the, if the board to use those funds outside. So if you didn't approve. If you approve this budget, you're not approving that, you'd have to approve that separately. Um.
So that's not a realistic figure, four point eight. As to what it's gonna cost.
Well, we could not pave, if I take out half.
I'm not talking.
No, but I.
Bottom line, you know, that's where I usually go.
It is, but, but if you wanna keep the full paving in there and, and. Not spike the budget, that's why I, I said put half of it in there.
But there's a lot of other things in there too.
Not, a- after you do the paving, there's not a whole bunch in there.
All right. Let me ask another question.
Yeah.
Where is the money to operate the village school?
This, this, to me, I, 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 from what I heard the board talk about was, i- if it goes, if it goes to the voters, it would be a ballot article.
And what do you anticipate that would be?
Well, the number was in there, it was eighty nine thousand dollars.
So there'd be another eighty nine thousand dollars pending voter approval.
Correct.
Right, okay, all right. Um. Want me to give you my usual thing?
I'm prepared for it.
I know you are. I, I spent a little bit of time today talking to other towns. As to their budget increases. Some of it was public and some of it took a phone call. Rutland City is up two point four percent. They used ARPA for only two things, to purchase a couple of items in public works. Portland Town is up five percent, no ARPA funds. Fairhaven, three point eight nine percent, no ARPA fund. Brandon, one percent. However, they had a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar, uh, carryover that they're using, so it's four point six. No ARPA funds. Well, the only one that used ARPA funds for things. Other than specific projects. Uh, was Rutland City. I guess my question is simple. How come these folks can do it? But we can't? You got your hand up, you're, you're first.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, knowing some of the backstories behind that, went without putting any town's name to it. Um, they gutted a lot of their budgets, and that's how they. And that's how they did it. And some people had employees resign over it. Um, so you can do it, you've got, if you wanna gut the budget, but I wanna make a point that the budget that we're in right now was only ten thousand dollars more than it was the previous year. I don't, so that, what does that mean? A lot of cuts were done that year. And then in the year prior to that. So we've done a lot of cutting and we try to find efficiencies, but when we're looking at prices of, of materials and stuff like that, that's real. And we've got pay increases that are bargained by union contracts. Those are real. Um, and when I, when I look at a budget line and the, the amount of money of pay increases and benefits is more than the overall increase of that budget with that department, what does that mean? Means I caught other places to get to that point. So it wasn't for the lack of trying. And some of it is what you wanna assume for risk and, and I, I kinda laid that out there with the paving and, um, y- y- you can just not do it for a year and save money, but the risk is we just get farther behind. That's all.
If you take the two figures and you add them together, you come up with a little over three hundred eleven thousand dollar increase. What does that calculate two percentage wise?
Could do the math if you want me to.
Who'd like to do the math?
Since you're picking on me, I don't wanna do the math.
I don't mind.
Did you already do the math too?
No, I haven't. I just, I couldn't, but I just got it.
Sort of the numbers again?
Three hundred and eleven thousand. Increase over this year's.
Well, I mean, a hundred sixty eight thousand increases at four point eight percent increase. So it's gonna be something short of twice that.
What was that, Joe?
It's gonna be something less than twice four point eight percent.
Eight percent?
No, it's gonna be like nine percent.
Nine percent increase.
That's what my quick mental math came up with, but I hadn't really actually done it with.
And also, Mr. Chairman, um, the city of Rutland gave their departments their own ARP funding too. So they were able to offset some of their costs by using the ARP because I talked to the park chief. And so they.
I talked to the treasurer today.
They received their own ARP funds. So he was able to offset some of his.
But imagine what their budget is and how much they received as compared to ours. We're just the little guy on the block.
The second largest in this commu- in this county.
Not compared to the city.
I said second.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Me?
Sure, Mary Lee.
I've got two questions. If we're using these ARP funds, what are we not doing that we were thinking of doing with the ARP funds before?
That sheet, Mary Lee, I think will paint a little bit of a picture for you. That's why I kinda added in at the bottom of that sheet, um, the projected, it's at the I lost it already.
I got it, Mike.
This one, nice Thor.
Highlighted. The little dinky one had all the small writing. This one right here.
You always have small writing, but we can't read it.
That's the reason.
So if you were to take the hundred and thirty six that was already obligated. It's, it's at the bottom of this page. It kinda broke, did a breakdown for you. Um, of what the starting was, el- things that were eligible. Amount of ARP that were removed from the budget, et cetera, blah, blah, blah. And it gets down to how much we received, which was one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty two dollars and eighty seven cents. Amount that the select board's already obligated, which is a hundred and thirty six thousand. The total, um, of amount obligated and requested, which is on that sheet, which is now less than it's a hundred and forty thousand. So I, I didn't transfer a damn number down there. Um, but when you do all that, it gives you the estimated balance. And then over here in the, in the yellow, I put, um, three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for Crystal Heights, which was the estimate to put the sewer lineup, Crystal Heights. A hundred and sixty seven thousand for Depot Terrace. And I don't have the Creek Road one at this point.
To me, that was going to be rather expensive because of the need of a pump station.
Yeah, because of the pump, the one.
You're talking about sewer extensions, right?
Yeah, those are sewer extensions.
But that's a good example of economic development.
Is so now when you subtract that off, the estimated balance of ARP, you could kinda get a sense of what's remaining, um, would you have enough to do those projects? And I, and I, I apologize, I can't give you the one for Creek Road right now. I didn't have it readily available.
You think you can get it a couple of days from Paul, Richard and Elliot?
I, I root through my email. Come across it.
Wh- wh- what was intended to convert extending sewer, we grow. Supposedly up to the corner of the conservation camp. There might be some, possibly some help there. If Fish and Wildlife decided they wanted to come down the hill and tie in. But they did put in a replacement, uh, system up there a number of years ago.
So if I'm following you correctly on that, so just past Wooders Marine. Where the prop, where the state property comes down there, that's where you're talking.
Yeah, yeah. You go further than that, I understand you run into a lot of ledge.
Mary Lee? One more.
Sure.
We can't really ignore the village school. Whether it's a yes or a no, we're still gonna pay that eighty nine thousand dollars. So you can't really ignore.
You can't. So it'd be like the appropriations for like castle and cares and the other stuff. It's not in the budget. So the town would have to raise enough taxes to pay for that eighty nine thousand dollars. Even though it's not sitting in the operating budget. So you'd still have to come up with the dollars. So when we do the tax rate figures, it all has to be calculated in there.
But as far as the landowners or taxpayers are concerned, you're still gonna have to pay it, so it's a bigger percentage than the four point eight or whatever is four point eight. It still brings that higher than four point eight that you have to raise for taxes. Whether it's a separate line or it's not a separate.
Yes, in the end, it has to come out of what has to be raised by taxes. And that's if the, if the petition goes through and it was for three years, you're looking at it that cost for a three year period.
Well, that, I, I believe in all fairness to the Recreation Commission, they're planning to provide some unknown, unknown amount of revenue. Really not insignificant amount over there.
And right now, the, the electric bill, the last one that would be paid was a thousand dollars. And it went from seven hundred, then eight hundred, then nine hundred, now a thousand dollars. So the more the buildings used, the, we're increasing the, the electrical costs as well.
Do you have an estimate as to what the cost is from July one to January one or December one?
Well, we gave that, we gave that figure to you. Um, it was.
Hubbardton?
Yeah, it was the one that was with Hubbard. I don't have it in front of me.
Wasn't it fourteen thousand?
Like fourteen thousand, yeah.
And they weren't not too happy with it.
And that, and we, and Mary Lee asked a question about just our phone and internet. And I, I, I stated the time I haven't done anything just trying to find out what was going on with the building because once we do, we're gonna have to enter a contract. And I've been kind of reading to see what happened before I committed that, but Bo has been down there working on a hotspot and it's working so far, right? We just gotta get bro a printer. Well, we're buying one for you.
Yeah, Aaron's been helping.
Oh, I thought you said my parents. I'm like, you've got some nice parents.
Mary, did you, you had your hand up?
Yeah, since you were talking about sewer, uh, as the, uh, said rec. We came, I came to you and asked about that study. Have you found that older study that, um, Devin Mearon mentioned, requested it?
Not for Creek Road. The ones that are for Crystal Heights, we have, we have two of them. Um, those prices don't even hold true now. So we've got an updated, um, we have an updated price for that because that was on the priority list of the state. Um, and that's why we have a list, a, a, a ballpark figure from our engineer. But it's not the final, like, real number. Um, but we don't have anything on Creek. I, there, I, there was a study done. No one can locate that thing. I know it did it.
I, I think it was, I think it was Paul, Richard and Elliot because they talked about the high water table because of the lake and and so on. You know, the creek is right next to it. That's, that's called Creek Road. That must've been quite some time ago because I don't remember.
Well, I talked to, I talked to Wayne and he, he, he's, he picked together a new, something new, but I don't and that, which I didn't have in front of me when I did this. Um, but that wasn't the, he didn't say anything about an old.
Okay. All right.
So where, where would we stand with that? Because that's what
That would be just getting with, uh, with, uh, Wayne Elliott to get an up, uh, something more official, I guess. And he, he sent me something and it was, it was all, it was a question about the pump station and, um, the if it could be done because of the high water table there. And so then he didn't commit to giving us like, here's my, here's my good estimate for you, or my solid estimate.
Okay. Mary Rose?
Uh, so going back to CBS and its expenses, I did, um, notice in your last board minutes that you had a discussion about the group, um, that had put together the last proposal um, in the spring and you had asked whether that group could be brought back together. Um, that you had some concerns that had faded away. And there was concerns that we had just left it all on the lap of the rec director and that wasn't fair. And so I guess what I would like to say in response to that is that, um, I guess given the outcome of the ballot vote, if the town votes in favor of it, I would simply request that the select board actually give our group some official mandate to do exactly that. Uh, we, we were bigger than the rec commission. The rec commission is already committed working on this with Bo. I am on the rec commission. Um, but as you probably might recall, that was a very grassroots driven group that put in considerable hours in the spring over five or six meetings where we got twenty to thirty people that come to each meeting. Um, to the ad hoc committee of both town boards, uh, put in a considerable amount of, amount of work without any guidance or criteria or timeframe. And so if we are to start this again, if the town is to vote for it on town meeting day, it would be great if it was made some, given some sort of official authority, um, to, to, to work on a plan that maybe could generate some revenue. But I, I think it's, um, you know, just put things in context. There was, there was a lot of work done. A lot of people came. There was quite a lot of passion. Um, I'm not sure it was all communicated well to the rest of you, honestly. Um, there's a tremendous amount of passion in town for this and people willing to put a lot of time and energy into it. Um, and just to remind you, the board voted to keep the school for two years and then you turned around and voted to sell it. So if there's been some fading away, it might be because of that. I'm just saying. I said.
You voted to keep it for two years?
The ad hoc committee.
Oh, the ad hoc committee. Okay. I'm with you.
After all of our meetings, to keep it for two years and you've turned around and voted against it, which is your right. You wanted to do that, but I'm just saying if you're accusing us of fading away.
See what it is. Was that, was that to stop your comment?
I'm just saying, if you want us to work on plan, give us the mandate and we'll be happy to do it. There's a lot of passion in this town for this to work.
Well, don't you think that the voters, if they're going to vote to keep the village schools should have accurate information prior to the vote as to what the cost might be to the taxpayers?
Well, I think, you know, according to Mike, the best estimate is eight, is eighty nine thousand dollars compared to.
So you, 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 can you kind of agree with that?
I have no you, you have all the information. You don't have the information. We can't second guess that or know anything more than
Okay.
You're, you're in the driver's seat on this. We're, we're just.
All righty. Anything else? Mary McIntyre?
Yes, Mary McIntyre. So do we have those studies or no? Devin, those two are studies.
Uh, uh, depend, if, if he wants the ones for Crystal Heights, the answer is yes. He's looking for the ones for Creek Road, the answer is no.
Creek Road and Depot.
That Depot Terrace, yeah. Okay.
Jim, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, just a second, Bob. Somebody's, okay, we'll get right, right to you.
Um, I've spoke, I've spoken with Bo, um, I've spoke with a lot of people, um, in our separate meetings, uh, in that group, people are in agreement that we need recreation in this town. Um, but all these what ifs, what ifs are hard for people to get behind and put their dollars behind. I believe that in this town, we have generous people who will give money, who will join Friends of Recreation. But we've gotta have some commitment. I mean, there is nobody committing from the select board as a group to say, yes, we're gonna keep that building and we want to have a recreational facility in town. We want to see that. Once you do that, I truly, with all my heart, believe that people will come together and support that building and those programs. Maybe not to cover every penny of it. But a lot more than you're giving the town credit for. We cannot sell or pitch anything without having any backing and everything of what if. And, you know, well, if the select board and if the select, ifs are just killing us. We need some definitive obligations or commit, mix of obligation, commitments from the town.
Could I answer to that? I don't think this board has ever said nor insinuated in any way, shape or form that members of this board are not supportive of recreation. And to have a recreation program that is equal to other towns our size. What board members have a problem with, and so did the Hubbardton is if this facility is the one that should be used for. That's all we did. We are not in any way negating having a reasonable recreation program for this town. Does that help to answer your question?
No, because are you giving any kind of resolve, meeting anybody in the middle? Like, we need a bill.
Where, please? Certainly, Joe.
Where is both of our?
Sorry, Mary. Joe has a point of order.
This agenda item? And the agenda item is, is fraught enough.
Okay.
Um, I, I think our, our, we're, we're at a point where we have to decide whether we're gonna make a decision tonight or as Mary Lee has suggested, have a subsequent meeting on the way to the law.
Right. Could I just go to Bob before we?
Oh, thank you, yes.
Yeah, Bob, you still there?
Yeah, I got, I got two questions. The one, and it doesn't have to be answered right now. The one question is, if we approve this budget with all the ARP, how much, Mike didn't get to it. He started to get to it, but how much ARP money is left? And in that same thing, I didn't hear anything about the salt and sand shed. And I stated over a year ago that I will not vote for any ARP uses until we nail down what that salt and sand shed will take. That's my thing on that. The other thing is the other thing is on the, on the sewer connections. Crystal Heights is on the thing. But Depot Terrace and Creek Road were not to be on there until we decide what we're gonna do with Preston Lane. Nobody mentioned Preston Lane. You guys, when I last mentioned this, you agreed, okay, Crystal Heights and Preston Lane, take first dibs. Not over Depot Terrace and Creek Road. So I'm a little perturbed about Preston Lane not being included in that conversation. And Mike, you were supposed to go down Preston Lane and see who would hook on to it. And I've asked you a couple of times if you've done that. Have you done that? Take a hole on.
Mr. Chairman, I have I, I'll, I'll answer the question, Bob. Um, I'll address the chair though. Um, I, I don't, because I don't have the final figures. I, I don't, because I don't have the final figures from Aldridge and Elliott to go back to be able to tell the folks on that road what the cost is gonna be and if there's any, uh, if anybody's willing to make a contribution towards that, because, uh, they have to come down and do the, they called it the basement window study where they go look at elevations and we're on Aldridge and Elliott's radar, just, he hasn't got down here to do it. When I say he, I'm talking about. So that, that's why I, I don't have a, a figure to provide at this time, Bob.
Oh, okay, because you, all you talked about was Depot Terrace and Creek Road and didn't hear a mention about Preston Lane. I just don't want that to be put out in the back burner.
No, it, it's on, it's on Aldridge and Elliott's radar to give us the facts and figures once they've done their, whatever, he called it a basement windows.
Okay. Okay, do you understand? I, unfortunately, I don't have the stuff, obviously, that you handed to the other select board members tonight. So all I have is what I picked up yesterday in my box. So I didn't have all those ARPA figures and all the yellow boxes you went through. So do you have the figure if this budget gets approved with all the ARPA uses? Do you have what would be left of ARPA money?
Right now, there, the fact sheet I look at, my figures right now would be one million seventy-four thousand dollars. Or one, yeah, one million seventy-four thousand, and that did not include taking out the Crystal Heights. The other, the other, uh, um, sewer projects, which by add those two together, that was what, a hundred and four hundred and two? So if you add in Creek Road and Preston Lane, then you're probably talking and add another four hundred thousand dollars. So I'm assuming, uh, maybe, maybe more. Uh, that there'd be money in ARPA to do eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars of sewer expansions. And still have some money left over.
Well, that is, we're getting into the weeds here on this, but.
Well, I'm just answering this question, Mr. Chairman.
I guess my question is that being the newest member of the board, if you go back to, uh, when the original sewer lines and plant, plant was built and the collection lines were installed, the whole town paid for it. But any extensions were paid for by the users who would benefit from it. Now, I am not saying that the users should pay the whole amount. But it does increase the value of property. And if sewer lines are going to be extended, which I support, then there should be a reasonable amount coming from the property owners who would benefit from it. As to what that number is, percentages, I don't know, depends on what's available. And so on. So I think that's something we kind of have to, and I think the question that Bob asked is a very good one. How much is left and where would it go?
This is a general, I gave a general answer based on what's in front of us right now.
Sure.
That doesn't take into account that list that was originally talked about.
Yeah.
Months ago.
Okay.
But, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Is it fair to say we might need another meeting on this?
Yes. Can I renew?
Is that you, Bob?
Can I renew?
That's me, yeah. That's funny. That's really funny.
Before you make a motion, can I answer first?
Sure, you can, yeah.
Um, so what would be helpful for me is for, for the feedback from the select board is, are there items in this budget departments that you can live with? Because it helps me narrow the things down.
Sure.
If you said, this one's good, this one, we're good with these, then I, now it's narrowing it down to probably, my educated guess is gonna be four or five departments. And, and that way I don't have to, we kind of look at these other ones and I can actually start planning ahead as far as ballot articles and blah, blah, blah. If, if you, if you can rise to that level of assurance, I, I'm not sure if you can.
But if it would please the board, could individual members get back to, you have a chance to look at this, the last draft? Uh, get back to Mike individually with your concerns or suggestions. And then we'll, we'll schedule another meeting. We can do that tonight. Schedule another meeting as soon as possible. So we hopefully finally get this thing wrapped up.
You ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If we're gonna have another meeting, exactly what are we planning on accomplishing at that meeting?
I would hope we would accomplish the finalize of the budget.
Well, what do we need to do to accomplish that? That's, that's exactly what Mike needs to know.
Back and get, get that information and digest this information, the last draft that we received tonight, along with Mike's comments.
Well, whatever I'm going with this is I suggest we set some goals tonight.
Go ahead.
And I don't know what those goals would be, but, uh, obviously the board members that are not satisfied with this proposed budget with an increase of four point eight percent should probably have some specific goals in mind of what they would be willing to accept.
I would be happy to provide that to the town manager.
And, and I'm prepared to go on record as saying, I can support this budget.
I am prepared to support it as well.
Okay, fine. And if you, um, wanna make a motion, you don't need a meeting, then go ahead and make it.
Well, I'll make a motion right now and get the party started. I'll make a motion, we approve the budget presented by the town manager. Last revision being revision three, last updated on January tenth, twenty twenty-three to the amount of three million seven hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars for an increase of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-nine dollars and an increase of four point eight percent.
Well, you want to add in the hundred and forty-three you're taking from ARPA, don't you?
That's not the motion.
Well, then your motion is incorrect, because we're looking, I think we should look at the total amount.
Um, Mr. Parliamentarian, would you care to rule in on this?
Well, I, I, uh, pointless to approve this budget if this proposal for a hundred forty-three thousand dollars is gonna be competing. So I think the two should be part of the same motion.
Okay.
Would you care to revise your motion?
I will. And it will include in my motion that we author, or we allocate the ARPA expenditures also on a document dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three to the sum of a hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred dollars.
Is there other discussion?
What percentage does that put the budget to? I'll go, I'll go ahead, sorry.
What, Bob?
I just wanted to know what percentage that puts it up with a hundred and forty-three thousand added to it. Has it put it up to like eight point nine? Is that what I heard earlier?
Somewhere between eight and nine without doing the math, Bob.
Eight, eight point.
Okay.
Eight point four, Bob.
Okay.
With, with four point eight to be paid for by tax.
Correct.
That is correct.
The elephant in the room.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, there, there's something I, I'm probably remiss, um, and if you could look at the pa, the budget packet on page ten. It's on page ten and eleven, but, um, the, on the bottom of page eleven, or I'm sorry, bottom, bottom page ten. Um, there's some red font where it says use thirty-five hundred in ARPA to cover these increased diesel fuel. But what I'd like to bring your attention to is, um, below the italics, underlined stuff, it starts with would, would like, it's like, I would like, would like the select board to add an article to the ballot um, to form a separate reserve for those reoccurring high dollar items to, to spread the cost out of several years. This is from the fire department. So they, what I talked to the chief about was they struggle to put, like, how they're gonna replace their extrication tools that are, you know, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, and how they're gonna replace their SEBA, which now the new prices just came in of over two hundred thousand dollars. And the other thing was, um, ice water rescue gear. So what the chief's asking is to, if the select board will allow this to go on about an article like we have in the past, to either expand the equipment reserve as it is now, to add those items, or to start a separate reserve account just for those items. And that way they can put money in there each year, like capital improvement monies, but it'd be, when it comes time to replace all that stuff, the money's there. And he doesn't come to the select board saying, I need two hundred thousand dollars to replace air, air bottles, because putting it in each year's budget, it doesn't work.
I thought we were on a revolving plan to replace so many air bottles a year.
He's, he's got it for the air bottles, but then you got the, the SCBA is the backpack and the mask.
Okay.
This is not really related to the motion on the floor.
No, not really, no.
No, as I said before, I said it before you made the motion, I wanted to get that in there before I forgot about it. Sorry, because if I forget about it, then it doesn't go on the ballot article, then it's not gonna happen, so. But it's just something.
A lot of other decisions, make it.
So did Bob, did Bob, did your questions all get answered at this point?
Um, I believe so.
Okay, now Allison had a question too.
Yes, your motion included the revision date of one-ten, but today's the ninth.
Oh, well, that's, I was looking at my doctor's appointment, so I guess I'm a day off.
Okay, I'll revise my motion to say the documents dated January tenth that were updated on January ninth, perhaps, is that?
I noticed that.
I, I don't pay attention to calendar dates as much as I should, because I'm in my little world.
I was just a little confused by that.
Well, I'm not confused as well. So I will just amend my motion to say they were updated January ninth, because they physically were updated today.
I'll, I'll change the two.
Okay.
So, so one-nine and dated one-ten. Right?
I have the documents in front of me dated January tenth. I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
The documents are supposed to have been dated today, that's when I did them, so I just got the date wrong. So I can amend the date on there if every, if the select board agrees that it should have been the ninth, not the tenth.
Okay. Does that make sense, Allison?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for the questions? Is there any other discussion? I will vote no on this, because I want a little more time to digest all of these different pages and so on.
Okay, you can't do that.
I can't do that?
Can't explain your vote.
Well, you already have it.
I know, you got away with it. Who second, there's somebody here second the motion.
I did, you did, okay. All those in favor then, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. I'm a nay.
Three to two, so we have not approved it. When would you folks like to have another meeting? So we can, as soon as possible. Bob, when will you be available?
I'll be by phone only right through Sunday. I'm not home till Sunday.
You won't be home till Sunday?
Yeah.
How about Monday?
I'm ready. I could meet Monday. Can you meet Monday?
Can you folks meet Monday? Mary Lee, check your calendar.
I can.
You can?
Can you meet Monday, Bob?
I can, Dick, yeah. If, if Mike would put down all that information you guys got tonight in my box, I'll grab it on Sunday.
Sure.
How about Monday at six-thirty, folks?
Sounds good to me.
It sounds good.
Monday the sixteenth.
It is, yep.
Fine with me.
I guess we're okay.
I need to interrupt again.
Pardon?
We lost the video.
Lost the video? Got it now, Allison?
No, I don't.
No. There it is.
Okay, she's good.
Thank you.
Six-thirty, six-thirty. Special meeting, Monday at six-thirty. Budget.
Just budget.
Be the only item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Hmm?
Be the only item on the agenda? Well, you're the chairman, you can make that happen.
Is that okay? That's the only item on the agenda. Right? Yep. Okay. Alrighty, um, should we possibly move on? Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Hi.
So between now and, I mean, I'm expecting that, is, is there an expectation that select board members will provide any feedback or guidance on?
Definitely to you, as soon as possible. Bob, if you have, well, you don't have the information. I was gonna say.
No, but if Mike can email to me, I, I get a chance to take a look at it.
I made a note, Bob, to email to you.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good.
And, and put it in my box, let's be, on Sunday, or for, for Sunday.
That, that'll be there tonight, so you'll be good.
Thanks, Mike.
Can I, oh, this, I, oh, gosh, this is Nancy Mark, I'm sorry to, do I get to ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Nancy.
Oh, thank you. Uh, well, I was, I was, um, interested in wha, what the process is gonna be, that board members will send some suggestions to the, to the, to the town manager, is that correct? About the budget?
Yes.
Okay, but there won't be discussion among the members, it'll be just.
Two members can discuss as long as it's not three.
I know, I got that. So that's, that's, that was my question.
Sure.
I'm just checking on that. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Purchase orders for approval, do we?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see any either.
If they're not with that, your own red packet are in it.
No. No, they're not, just the, just the warrants. Okay, move on to the warrants, if not, we'll hear about it tomorrow.
Melanie's on, so I mean, obviously you heard that.
What?
I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number one-two-two-nine for six thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and fourteen cents. Warrant zero-one-zero-five for twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Warrant zero-one-zero-nine for seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Excuse me. Warrant one-two-two-nine P for seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents and warrant zero-one-zero-five P for sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and eleven cents.
Is there a second?
One second.
Second, any discussion of these warrants as presented? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Think we have some others.
Let's make a motion that we approve warrant number zero-one-zero-six P for six hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And number one-two-three-zero P for six hundred and forty-seven dollars and two cents.
Is there a second?
One second.
One second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Oh, I recuse myself.
Dick recuses himself.
Are those the two? I don't sign any questions.
Yeah, that's why I gave him everything.
Is that a law?
I believe so.
Okay.
I usually don't count until I come back.
Yeah, we will.
You haven't voted on these, they were made, but you didn't vote on.
All those in favor of the last two warrants that were presented, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion's approved.
Oh, we did.
And Dick recused himself.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, he recused himself.
A while ago. I don't know if we voted or not.
Till nine o'clock.
We're not too bad.
At least the Red Sox aren't playing tonight, right?
So I checked on the.
What's the score, Joe?
Well, a while ago, it was Georgia twenty-four-seven.
Twenty-four-seven?
Now it's thirty-one-seven.
Oh. Four.
Four horned hogs.
Yes.
And a positive note.
They were the Cinderella team.
I know.
I know that. Who was it that beat the Packers?
Detroit.
Right. Yeah, that's right, and they, but they didn't get in.
No. They had eight, I get eight and eight records, both of them.
Yeah.
If, if Packers won, they're in, but if the, um, Detroit won, they don't, they didn't get in. They did win, they're nine and eight.
Just do it either percentage points or
or in their division or.
I, sometimes when I see how matrix isn't, how it all works, it all makes sense, but I'd have to see the matrix to understand it, because it's, gets pretty complicated.
Oh, I know, I know. And weren't they talking about a neutral field? For Kansas City and Buffalo or something?
Kansas City and Buffalo, or no, Kansas City and Cincinnati, if it works out that they're wind up the number one and two seed and wind up.
Why would they need a, a neutral?
Because Cincinnati didn't get a chance to beat the Bills.
Oh, because of that game. Okay, I, I never, I never heard that.
How many we got? We're supposed to have seven.
You're right.
Tim, when you have a short agenda, Mike, maybe we could, we can walk us through the year-to-date report that Melanie provided.
Okay.
It's, uh, there's some. It's, uh, there's some interesting questions.
Okay. Do, if you have any, anybody has any questions on the numbers, if you could, if you want to send them ahead of time, we'll give you a chance to make sure I'm.
All the signatures are there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I was just looking at places where. By November thirtieth, we have already spent more than we had budgeted and sometimes we have. Six-figure budgets and tiny little expenditures to date.
Sure, there's an explanation. Yeah, some of the stuff we pay upfront, like it's a payment of some type of payment, like insurance or.
Yeah, benefits for.
Yeah.
Fire department.
Yeah, so they get paid ahead of time and then, so it looks like five months to the year, there's like mostly spent, that's kind of the reason.
Because they're not gonna spend any more money the rest of the fiscal year.
May maybe the, maybe it would be an individual meetings with Melanie.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if if it's, you know, like individual things, it'd probably be better for me than try to. Reexplain it during a meeting, because I may have to look at Melanie and go.
Yeah.
She's listening, so if you have those kind of questions, it probably better just to meet in there in person.
Okay, back to the.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
This is Melanie Combs, um, in response to, um, Joe's comment just now. I'm always more than happy to meet with any of the select board members if they have questions about the financial reports. My door is always open.
Thank you very much, Melanie, we appreciate that. Any select board comments and or concerns that haven't already been expressed this evening? Negative, negative? You're good. Bill?
I'm fine.
You're fine, Bob?
I want to thank Mike for doing the side by side proposal, the budget proposal, side by side comparison, that's very helpful. The only thing is, if we could have got that back in November, that would have been much more acceptable, but it is what it is, but I want to thank him for doing that. I think that's a huge help, at least to me. Um, and the other thing I got, I got, and I don't want to state what it is, but it was like an advertisement flyer put in my box. Um, I don't really approve of that. It said on the top of the piece of paper, it said W O W on it. I don't know if any of the other board members got that, but I don't think that's appropriate to have that put in my box.
Anybody?
It was an advertisement, a business in Concaster, and I just, I just don't think it's appropriate. And it didn't, it didn't fit in with the town, it had nothing to do with the town. It was on a personal note, so I don't know, like I said, if anybody else. On the select board got it put in their box, but it was one of my box, and I don't, I don't think that's acceptable.
You're aware of it, Mike?
No, I said I'll find out, I'll figure out. If what exactly, are you saying that it's, is, what's it doing, Bob, what?
It's it's advertising this particular business's services.
So it's it's like putting one business over another or something?
On, well, no, it's just this one particular business from the business owner, he put in there. You know, I don't want to get into too much, because it's gonna pretty much spell it out.
Alright, I'll.
But it's it's an advertisement. Asking to sign up for the service and. I just, I don't know where it came from, and I don't know if anybody else got it in their box, I I'd be shocked if it was only in my box.
I can sign now, Bob, so I know, I can ask questions.
Okay.
It was a fire alarm in college, by the way.
Okay. Anything else? Any need for?
That's it for me.
Pardon?
That's it for me, Jim, both two things.
Okay. Any need for an executive session, Mike?
I I personally don't, no.
I have no desire for one.
I don't either. Is there a motion then to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at.
High fourteen.